We have a hiring policy. We had time to do this. It wasn't followed. I would like to see this table, the policy followed, and then the hiring commence. So my vote is none.
Monique Proctor? Soonhe Sherwood-Dublin?
Yes.
Jermaine Nelson Smith?
Yes.
Laura White?
Yes.
And Ruthie Whitehead?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, do we have any personal items here or we're through it, right? All right, so I'm gonna take it over to Dr. Morell here because we just had two new, we had one new approval and we have someone that we approved at a special meeting, our new principals here. So just let Dr. Morell take it and then we'll go from there.
This is a fun part.
For all of us.
Love this part. It just gives me great pride and joy and honor to seek out and find such highly qualified educational leaders in our community here on Long Island. And I'm just so proud that Melissa Danowski walked through our door and really showed just what extraordinary talent, promise, compassion, and passion for students, what it looks like. I welcome her from Petchoff, but she has her last position was assistant principal in Middle Country, and I welcome her as the newly appointed principal of our adorable elementary school. Let's welcome Melissa Danowski. Do you have a few words?
I just want to say thank you to the Southampton community for welcoming me with open arms. For many years, I spent summers out here working in hospitality and serving families as a nanny, and to be back here is such an honor. I, this past weekend, as Mr. Appleby shared, we had a car wash, and I have never felt more part of a community. It was so beautiful, so I just want to say thank you and I hope to be here and serve everyone well. Thank you, Dr. Morell.
Thank you.
Melissa, I think you have some people here, right?
You can stand up, please, so we can see the family. All right. Behind every great leader is an even greater family and support structure, so we thank you and we'll take good care of her. And now, it gives me extreme honor and pride to again recognize just the extreme depth and breadth of talent located here on the island, but right now, we have him here in Southampton, and I would ask that our newly appointed principal coming from Islip, currently in Petchoff, Metford, I'm still working with these names, Metcap, Islip, okay, some people say Islip, some people say Islip, I don't care. This is an extraordinary young man, and when he graced each of us, each panel, he just came through with fine colors, so elevated, so intellectual, such promising, and I'm just really extremely proud to have you here in Southampton. Can you please take your seat as the newly appointed principal of Southampton High School? Thank you. Mr. Derek Robinson, and he has his family here. Again, behind every amazing leader is an even more amazing family structure. Can you please stand and be recognized? Thank you. We're so proud to have you here, leading our high school. Can you say, would you like to say a few words to the community?
Yes. I just want to say first, is it okay if I just stand over here?
Absolutely. See what I mean?
I'm just gonna turn this back to Facebook. Good evening. First, I just wanted to congratulate our students and give them a round of applause, please. I look forward to getting to know you both, of course, all students here in the district, and getting a chance to work together. I want to thank the Board of Education and District Office for this incredible opportunity. I'm honored to be appointed as the next principal of Southampton High School. I want to express my sincere gratitude to the community and everyone here tonight for your warm welcome and support. A special thank you to my family who are here this evening and have always been my greatest champions. I look forward to continuing the outstanding work of Dr. Zahn and building upon the strong foundation already in place at Southampton High School. My goal is to work collaboratively and build a strong trusted relationship with staff, students, and families of Southampton to embrace a culture of care and celebrate a diverse community that makes Southampton so special. Together, we will continue to support our students in achieving their educational and career aspirations. We will continue to provide a safe and supportive learning environment where all students are equipped with the knowledge, values, and skills to become responsible citizens in a dynamic global society. Thank you, and I look forward to working with all of you and officially today being part of Southampton.
Thank you both. I got to meet Melissa at the car wash this weekend, and I gotta tell you, she worked her butt off, she was the whole time out there washing cars. So that was great seeing Derek. Welcome to Southampton, I've heard wonderful things, so, I'm sorry, is this your daughter? Tell your dad to bring you a blueberry after this. He has to sit in this meeting for two hours. Tell him he owes you at least some ice cream there. Before we move on, we got one more person here that we just approved that Dr. Morell wants to know.
It gives me great pride and honor to tonight introduce our interim director of pupil personnel services, Dr. Carleen Mears of Saic Harbor. Comes to us with over 20 years of educational leadership in pupil personnel services. We are so proud, honored, and happy and blessed to welcome her back to Southampton schools. I would ask if she could please come forward and say a word. Let's welcome Dr. Mears to the leadership of pupil personnel services in Southampton.
Good evening. Good evening, I'm very excited to be here. I'm honored, I'm excited to be a part of the community again. I'm dedicated to the Southampton community. As I said to Dr. Morell earlier, I lived in Saic Harbor, but I was on the Southampton town side, so I'm here, I'm 110% in, and I can't wait to get started. Welcome both of you and welcome to the new student representatives, and thank you to the Board of Education and community for your support, and my door is open.
Thank you, Dr. Mears.
That's great, so, welcome. To move on here, we got some action items. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the 7-1 reorganizational meeting and the 7-1 regular meeting and the 7-21, 2025 special meeting as presented in the agenda? Monique? Second, Ruth? Will the clerk please call the roll for a vote?
Robert Zachariah, please.
Yes.
Rodney C. Pearson?
Yes.
Monique Proctor?
Yes.
Soonhe Sherwood-Dublin?
Yes.
Jermaine Nelson Smith?
Yes.
Laura White?
Yes.
And Ruthie Whitehead?
Yes.
Awesome. We have a little unfinished business here, we just gotta do the Board of Education committees. I know we talked about it last time, Jermaine wasn't here, so I'm just gonna run through, we have Audit and Finance, right now Chip and myself are on it, Jermaine, you were on that committee, do you wanna, you wanna stay on that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So Jermaine, and we got Soonhe as the alternate. Facilities Committee, new, we have Chip and Ruth on it, still opening. I kinda left open, I can join whatever ones you don't want to be on, it's up to you on that one. Jermaine or? No, okay. So I'll fill in there, and then Monique is our alternate. Personnel Committee, we have Laura and Monique, one more spot, I was on it, I'm happy to not join, you wanna join that one, Jermaine, right?
Yep.
Get Jermaine, we need an alternate for that committee. I guess I'll be the, okay, I could be the alternate too if you wanna. Yeah, perfect, and Ruth too, so we'll figure that out. Policy Committee, we have Laura, Monique, Ruth, alternate with Soonhe. Merger Committee, we have Soonhe, myself, we have an alternate Chip, we have an opening.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I would like to be on that committee, not as an alternate, but as a member.
Okay.
If you see fit.
Sounds good. Do anybody wanna be the alternate on that? Okay, Laura's gonna be the alternate. Wellness Committee, I know we just kinda left this open, we have Monique, Soonhe, Laura's gonna be alternate. Do we even need a third for that? We'll just leave that as is, I know that's a school-run committee, we'll put that out. All right. Okay, so now I give you a motion to establish the following Board of Education committees for the 25-26 school year. Audit and Finance Committee, Personnel Committee, Merger Committee, Facilities Committee, Wellness Committee, and Policy Committee. Do I have a motion just a second?
Mr. President, before you do that, I just want to, in the past, correcting it if I'm wrong, Amy, we listed who was on the committees and we didn't break those committees up until the final committees were approved, but this is done a little bit differently this year. I just wanted to make, everything that, you know, is here is fine, but in the past, we gave these city members the opportunity to say what do they want, do they want them or not, and it was done a little differently this year from my recollection over the last few years.
Okay, yeah, sorry, that's, all right, so we're all good.
Oh, we're good.
Okay, all right, that's it, make sure we're all good, yeah, because we went over it last time and some of this stuff is new to me too, creating it, so. Do I have a motion to establish the committees? Motion, Board, do I have a second?
Second.
Chip. And you say, do we, will the clerk please call the roll for the vote?
Robert Zachariah-Dublin?
Yes.
Rodney C. Pearson?
Yes.
Monique Proctor?
Yes.
Soonhe Sherwood-Dublin?
Yes.
Jermaine Nelson Smith?
Yes.
Laura White?
Yes.
And Ruthie Whitehead?
Yes.
Okay, so I hereby appoint the Board of Education Committee membership for the 2025-26 year as we just went over. What we'll do is, with Amy, we'll get in touch and we'll try to keep to those times and adjust, and we'll reach out and set stuff, so, yeah, looking forward to it, be good. At this time, we're gonna go to our second round of public comment. Public comments will be heard at this time. The Board of Education encourages public participation in school-related matters at the board meetings. Any group or organization wishing to address the board must first identify a single spokesperson. The presentation should be brief as possible, speakers will be permitted to speak for up to three minutes. The board will not allow public session discussions involving individual district personnel or students. All speakers are to conduct themselves civilly. Obscene language, lies, statements, threat, or violence, and statements advocating racial, religious, and other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. Persons making presentations at the board meeting will address remarks to the president. They may direct questions or comments to the board members or other district officials only upon approval from the president. So do we have any other? Oh, you pressed one, yeah, there you go.
Dear members of the Board of Education, Dr. Morell and Southampton community, we are Opellen. Our names are Victoria Nava.
Paula Maya Borivo.
Juana Jimenez.
And Tania Cruz.
And absent today, Yanae Moreno-Rainer and Elizabeth Diaz. We're here today representing the Latino parent organization in Southampton. We have taken this given platform to express to our community and the Board of Education our most sincere appreciation and gratitude to two different members of the school district. First, we would like to thank Dr. Morell for her dedication and opening the door to Opellen. We fully recognize and deeply respect the significant responsibilities and transitions you're managing as our superintendent. We're witnesses to your dedication and leadership during this important and transitional time, and we sincerely appreciate your continued efforts on behalf of our district to provide equity and inclusivity within our own community. We appreciate your effort in allowing the Latino community to have a voice that can not only be heard but also present within the district. Secondly, we would like to highlight Dr. Anna Martinez-Fuentes, Director of VNL Dual Language, World Language, and Diversity, Equity, and Inclusivity, and her work supporting the diverse community of Southampton, including the Latino families. For the past 17 years, she has been much more than an educator, administrator, and leader. She has been a steadfast pillar of the Southampton community, especially for our Latino families. Dr. Martinez-Fuentes has exemplified exceptional leadership, cultural competence, transparency, undeniable work ethic, and professionalism in every aspect of her career here in Southampton. She tirelessly advocated for our children and families, building meaningful bridges between the school and the Latino community. Her presence brought pride to our families and created a celebration of cultural identity that had long been absent. She gave us a space to feel seen, valued, and heard in ways that few others have. Our district moves through this period of changes, her absence will be deeply felt. We are immensely grateful for her years of service and wish her the very best in the next chapter while serving other diverse communities on Long Island. Dr. Anna Martinez-Fuentes, your work has no limits. La extrañaremos inmensamente gracias por empoderarnos, abrirnos las puertas y darnos una voz que continuará siendo escuchada por muchas generaciones. Thank you again, Dr. Morell, for your time, your leadership, and your continued partnership with our Latino community. We look forward to continuing our collaboration with you and the district. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Is there any more after comments? Tommy or Ruth? All right, so at this time, we'll go on to new business agenda items. So when we went over the stuff, I wanted to do this a little bit differently. I feel that everybody up here should have a voice. So what we do is, under new initiative, we're gonna have each trustee have their own line going forward, so you guys can, you know, if you wanna thank somebody, whatever you wanna do, tell a joke, so go forward. You know, so you guys, everybody has a platform here to speak, and everybody's listed on the agenda. So I'm turning the first one here, it's all this alphabetical order, I got nothing. Chip?
Uh, yeah, I have a couple things. Last month, I asked for the board action to be provided for the Native American contract, and I have yet to receive it, so I was just wondering if I could be provided that or when that might be coming.
At this point, we're still waiting on the Controller's office to draft the actual contract to then send down to us to approve. That's, we've been in touch, I know Jean, Dr. Morell, we've gone back and forth, and the state's been dragging that beat on that, and as you're probably aware, we have not received any tuition money for the 24-25 school year, so it's been leaving a little bit of a hole in our budget, but we are working on it, they said that it's flagged, and hopefully we'll have it soon.
The appendix D for that was sent, was going over and sent up, so there must be a action on that. Is that correct?
Certainly, there is no action on that. We looked, that was something that was drafted up by the lawyers, gets sent up for their review in their eyes, and then what happens is that appendix D then comes back to us with the actual contract, and at that point, we will make an action on all of that and review it, and hopefully approve it, and then that, that contract will then get sent back to the state to be signed. So until we receive it back, there's no action to be made.
One other thing, just wanna follow up on the last month's building use to our, was everything handled? Was there a memo went out? Anything that was for our administrators to kinda go back to everyone and make sure that everybody's on the same page with that policy?
Yes, so we sat down with the HITA facilities, Marcus Pasilda, as well as the HITA Athletics and the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Operations, and we talked about protocols for using our facilities and the steps that maybe must be taken and the forms that must be filled out for that to happen. So I think now that everything will go through markets, that we should be fine for ensuring those protocols are followed moving forward.
All right, great job.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ruth. Monique, do you have anything that you would like, or anybody you'd like to give a shout out to? You got to, can you turn your microphone?
First and foremost, I'm so excited, as I've said a zillion times, congratulations to our student members that are representing the body, okay? That's a huge responsibility, and they keep stepping up through the plate and doing something that even us as adults can be nervous about, so we got your back. And then, I had the opportunity to sit on both, on a panel for the hiring of our new elementary school principal and our new high school principal, and when I tell you, you guys move me out of the water, because I'm excited. I'm excited for the new freshness coming into our elementary school, you have the enthusiasm that is needed there, the newness, the freshness, just, and the wealth of knowledge. And to you, the wealth of knowledge around all of the different aspects of Southampton, not knowing much about Southampton or not coming from here in itself, but then the intelligence and all of your knowledge and so many things that this high school can expand upon to help our children to be able to navigate from K to 12 and into adulthood. So I'm really like just blown away by the both of you, and I wish you the best, and we, as a board, and Dr. Morell as your superintendent, we are here to support you and we wish you the best. You have Patrick here, your middle guy.
Sounds better, right?
Yes, and I have one more thing, as for our students, I wasn't sure if we received like a, like a student board pamphlet, vacant mentors, which I feel like would be something amazing, just to show you like, what are we even doing with this, you know what I'm saying? And also, for them to be informed about the NSFA Trips, the National, the New York State National School Boards Association conventions, where, I don't know if you've heard, I've mentioned many times about my experiences there with students that were already on the boards in their respective schools, and I wanted to know, are we gonna be open and accept to our students? We have parents here as well, and just to give our students the best opportunity to learn all that that I myself learned while in elementary school.
So there's a series of training programs. There's one on September 17th that we have to make sure they go to, and then they will also be going to, as they can, a couple of those conferences, so I will provide the board with the handbook in them as well for student board members, and then the board will have to decide who will serve as mentor for these students, because they have to have a board member mentor. So that's gonna be a board decision, but I think that we need to get the handbooks first and read those things and then see who really wants, you know, really who mentored that, because that's a really important work, but it needs to be done.
Yeah, so we'll get the handbooks out to everybody this week and then think about what you want, and we'll discuss it and pick a mentor at the next meeting for you guys, Awesome, thank you, Monique. Jermaine, you got anything?
Uh, yes, I just wanna say welcome our young board members, if you can hear me. Welcome to our young board members, welcome to our district employees up there as well, and great idea, Monique, on the mentorship, and on this board, there's no one in such a short period of time who has done more of these NSFA events than Monique, so if you have any questions, why don't you, she would, she would help you out with that, but welcome, thank you.
I'm ready to go. I'm ready to go. Let's do this, you have your voice, and it's necessary, and these experiences show that are not just in Southampton, you've seen, you've seen junior schools, maybe as varied as possible, you've seen five major states, then you can come back to take and say, Noah, I learned this, I learned making friendships at school, let's see how we can adapt to this, I'll be first to attend, and Noah?
Awesome, and I actually skipped standing right there, so. I was, I checked next to the names as I was going, and I checked you before, so do you have anything you'd like to, or anybody else?
I'm just gonna echo everybody's words, I think you can tell that the board is so excited to have student representation, so we're thrilled to have you, it'll be a great learning process, and we look forward to all the contributions that you make going through the conversation and decision-making process. So welcome, and welcome to our, our new principals. Very excited, I was able to sit in for your second level interview, so I saw some wonderful things, and I've heard wonderful things about you, so I'm very excited, just thank you.
Thank you. Laura, do you have anything?
Hi, everyone, congratulations, Matea and Noah, welcome. I'm also a newbie on the board, so we're going through this together. If you have any questions, don't ever be afraid to ask, and just take time to listen over here for you. This is my second official meeting, board meeting, so it's been a pleasure getting to know the board, our administration, and our superintendent, and it is an honor to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, I want to say one more thing, I'm sorry. I just wanted to thank all of the parents here for speaking about Dr. Fuentes. She will be missed, she made a huge impact on our communications and building relationships in our Latino community, so she will be missed, so thank you for taking the time to recognize her, expressing the gratitude for her work that she did the last 17 years.
Wait, one more.
Madam Vice President?
Yes, thank you. Great idea, Zach, thank you for setting this up. I just wanted to reflect I just wanted to reflect on the summer of hiring that's gone on in the district, not just at the building levels, but at the district level. We've been interviewing constantly. And I just wanna thank all the staff. It takes a lot of time, and it's not taken lightly, what we have to do. And I wanna thank all the candidates for submitting their applications and sitting with us. I also wanna thank the community because without the collaboration of the community, we wouldn't have, you know, vetted such excellent candidates. And they volunteer hours of their time to make sure that we come up with quality candidates. And I just appreciate the community support for sitting on interview committees. We're talking hours a day, often without a break for lunch. And we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. No, I'm telling you, you're not gonna get out of here without saying a word, so. Noah, is it first, maybe you wanna tell people that your mom does make the dinner instead of your...
Or you stop at McDonald's. I just wanna say thank you to my mom, my parents, and my dad for coming to the meetings all the time and supporting me. And I also wanna say thank you to Dr. Zahn for the continuous support in the end of the school year, in the middle of the school year, with all the support with the courtyard, making kids really happy out there. And I can't wait to keep working on that with our new principal at the Southampton High School. And thank you for everybody that's doing a really good job during the summer, and I can't wait to get back to school September 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you, Noah.
Hi, I'm Matea. Nice to meet you all. I'm really excited, and thank you for being so welcoming and welcoming. So thank you so much. I'm excited for this.
Awesome. Thank you. We're excited too. All right. So if there is nothing else here, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting at, is that 8:30? It's 8:50.
I have to say, all those meetings, all those interviews, Dr. Morel, thank you very much for facilitating them, retaining us to such a high standard and maintaining that level. Everybody who participated in the candidacies left feeling like, yeah, I really do wanna be here. And so I wanna acknowledge everything that you've done. Zach, you're a great person to sit next to.
We had fun. It was a long day, but we had fun.
Yes. I just wanna say thank you, everybody. Thank you, Denise.
Thank you, Denise. And thank you for sitting on committees. I know it's your volunteer and your time, take the whole day and sit in a conference room for eight hours.
But then look what we get.
We get quality. So it's good. So, thanks, Zachary. And would Zach have a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:30?
Motion.
Motion. Second vote, Monique. No? All in favor? All right. Thank you, guys.